Thanks.
No, I I interviewed him. So everybody. So. I love you in my. Fifty 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 with the beard. He's gonna like that. I guess that's all about. I I just look younger.
Yeah.
How much younger. However. Go to. The ground. John. You described.
Actually, I worked with the health organization. Still, we don't have very good art school education. I then worked in a couple organizations that had how to. Autumn for everything. And so there were different ways to. That are hopefully. It was. Impressive.
Yeah, it is. Yes, so my delight see I found this on my website and. What center? Is you.
Oh, wow. All right.
Yeah.
Pretty cool.
There's no height.
Apparently not.
First thing in the morning. That is because you want to leave. Didn't be done.
Yes. Remember justice. I was. She's getting. Just get swapped. They're not smart enough to think.
Don't worry. Especially when I was tired on the. I had to grab a chair.
If anyone heard from Debbie. Oh, I think the Debbie is gonna be a human plate and then we'll start without her. Do we have a four? Okay.
Yes, we do.
What do you do?
Four on the set.
Sixty eight. Four, yeah. Do you want me to get started? Yeah. I have to get us started. Ooh, without my. Okay. Call in meetings order. Uh, first, we're gonna establish we do have a core and. I would like to reply of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands. One nation under God into its whole liberty and justice. We're good. So let's first move to approve the agenda for today.
I move to approve the agenda.
All in favor? Okay. Um, let's move to approve the consent agenda. Remove the consent agenda for today. All in favor? Passes. Uh, move to special presentations. Do we have our student representative?
Hello. Where do you want me to stand? Anywhere you would like. Very honest stand over here. So we had a very busy time this past month at CHS Leadership Organized Food Drive. And congrats to Mr. Holland's class for contributing most food and sock items to Food Drive, however, really took the whole school together. We ended up creating seven complete Thanksgiving meals for looking loss families and sent them hundreds of socks for unhoused youth. We also created ten complete Thanksgiving meals for local press all families and then donated another seven turkeys local families. And the remaining food items are all being donated to the Presswell Food Pantry. And then Mr. Holland's class and it earned a trip to the five for having the most donations. And then there's sports are underway, so basketball wrestling each year. Mountain event, mom's sport, um, high school. And then National Honor Society also had a lot of things going on this year. They had a holiday giving kind of program. Where eight hundred dollars was raised through a holiday fundraiser to support a family of five, four kids and a mom. And then the top fundraiser got to actually buy the items for the families. So they got things like bikes, helmets, clothes, diapers, formula, food, snow pants, jackets, toys, books, and other household items the family needed. And then students actually got to go and deliver those things uh in person today to the family. Such a special. And then National Honor Society also did a diaper drive this past month. AHS kids went to help repack diapers with a local organization, ages twenty five. And then Catherine Dumas reported that the diapers in the diaper bank came back to support Presswell families. And lastly, National Honor Society also volunteered at the National Tree, aging over Thanksgiving break as a mandatory volunteering event. And then sources of strength, sources of strength student training withheld us last week for the first time and forty two. Bid in the first training and personal strength in the period support initiative. Leadership is wrapping up our week before uh winter break is Spirit Week, so Monday with Pittsburgh's theme. Tuesday with ugly flutters and then during wind, they passed out hot cocoa candy names for students. Today was holiday socks and headwear theme. And then during advisory, they got to watch uh winter movies and play war games. And then tomorrow's theme is Winter Wonderland Whiteout. They're gonna make snowflakes and then uh Friday is Fall Day pajama day and then the seniors versus staff will have a basketball game. And then the winning team scores the prize and then at the end of the day, they'll be carried. And that's it.
That's a lot of fan of thank you. Okay, uh, thank you. Those excellent. Uh, our next item will be a presentation from Lane E S D.
Great. All right. Well, thanks for having us. I'm Tony Siro, Superintendent Lane E S D. And uh here are a couple of our guests uh joining me. Chair your tickets, who we've met before, she says, appeared several times. Uh, long standing board member for Lane E S D and. Here's neighbors to the south, southern. And then uh also with me tonight is Eric Anderson, who served his years as our assistant superintendent. So we wanted to come along and meet some of our school lizard. Uh, I'm here tonight. We want to talk about some of the services that we offer to the Presswell School District. And it's that time of year where we ask our school boards to approve uh what the local person. And so the state requires education service districts to have a local service plan to serve the needs of students in the component of school. Just in which we serve, there are sixteen districts in Lane County. And the law requires us to provide services in special education, uh, school improvement, technology, and also uh. We're doing a school formula. So we've got four point five percent of the station. This is students and nineteen E S Ds. And then we break it down at Lane E S D based upon the number of students that each district has in Lane County. So uh. The the past side, I believe in your packet, you have the the local, the full local service plan is pretty thick packet. But what you don't have in there are the specific services that. Presswell School District ordered. I'll show you what those are. This also shows the amount of money that was allotted to the Presswell. Uh, from. Or E S D plans. And that number is at the upper right in the corner. And so out of all the services that we offer, um, what's not on here, I should say, are technology services because. Those are considered a core service meeting that every single district in Lane County, no matter how big or how small, contributes money to run our technology department. Same is true of our school improvement department that um it's kind of like a curriculum department and you think, well. You may have some curriculum personnel, they they share other duties that they that they uh do in a district. The district like Eugene Four J has their own curriculum department, yet they still contribute to the school improvement, which essentially runs curriculum for districts. It's not that they don't use it, even though they have their own curriculum department, because they do partner with our curriculum um specialists on quite a few endeavors. But other than the core services. Then the the services you see here are this are services that districts can can purchase and each each district purchases slightly different things in here. Heaviest purchase by far among districts in the county are special education services. And you'll note that with what you're you're getting here in the press. I'll also say that we're very appreciative of the partnership we have in life skills classrooms, special ed classrooms with. We get two classrooms, we operate right here in your district, the press that I want to be in the press. And that makes it a regionally uh a a very uh efficient way of not having to ship kids all across the county with those problems. So uh and looking over the things you order, there are, I'd say, half the districts in Lane County um. Don't spend all of their allotment. Year and a half that spends your allotment and and that's primarily due to the uh the number of uh special ed services that that you're. The local service plan needs to be approved annually by the superintendent council. That was done on November twenty first, you had a meeting. Uh, our school board at Lane E S D uh. Made this an action item at our December fifth meeting. And we're asking our component school districts to vote on whether or not to approve this by March first. So you're the second board in Lane County to get this presentation, so if you have time, if there's something you want to move tonight, that's great. If you wanted to wait and know more about what's in it and take a longer look. Yeah. With that all. Eric, you're in one manner this morning. I hope to take questions tonight and also. Uh, questions between our third, fourth.
Can you add any questions? I have a comment. This is super helpful. Thank you so much for teaching the detail. Cause your service plan while we looked at it and ready. You know, especially in previous years is very consuming, so it's great to see kind of like a cheat sheet of specifically why Presswell uses us. So thank you for doing that.
So one thing I'll add on that note is that the local service plan has now incorporates our Student Investment Act Comprehensive Support Plan. It's a separate part of money, but it's still part of the local service plan. That doesn't come out of the school fund. That comes out of the Student Investment Act. And of the Student Success Act. And we've been able to staff quite a few folks in that that are providing guidance to districts in things like um. Blending the integrated, in the integrated guys blending the different state initiatives together instead of keeping them separate. So that's one of the things that's working. And if you look at the back at the school, at the Student Investment Act Plan, it's more charts than it is narrative. Um, we're we're kind of looking at how we might better present this local service plan in a narrative, maybe something smaller that still has some perfect information, especially now in this electronic days where you can put on something to expand if you want to know more. But if you want to know, here's the service, here's kind of the cost that it might be a little easier work to thinking whether or not to do this, not for twenty four, twenty five, or twenty five answers.
Very cool. So the S I A funding is in addition, the services funded through that for you guys that flow versus in addition to this.
Right, the the amount you see up here is nearly the amount that is in the state school fund. Broken down to to Crestwell. The Student Investment Act money, um. It's it's over two million that we got for the buy in and and that provides actually a lot of support in school improvements. So what's happened is the core for school improvement is Shum. And the S I A split that more than that. Uh, that's what you do to the S I A plan, really focusing on um. Providing equitable uh instruction, equitable practices for students who can serve in the city. So our department is doing something now already. We were able to move some of the folks who were doing that into the S I A, so the actual amount of the cost of local sources for the state school is actually around now.
So this may be a tangent from the actual plan, from the agenda, but it raises a question for me. Um, when the S I A funding came in, I did not think it was supposed to supplant a general fund from the state. So with what you just said, does that mean Lane E S D? Did not get the full increase from S I A, the S I A funds supplanted the state's. State school fund?
No, no, it it didn't splat. We, what happens, we've got some positions that are hybrid positions. We've always had that. And so some of that is was naturally doing what is the plan called. So the other thing our services have to make sure we don't do is offer any direct services to students. So our services in the S I A are pretty much professional development, staff to staff. And then when we could, there there's other reasons. We've we've all kind of moved, I think there's a couple of reasons that have all of all this going through me. That's that I guess I think. So.
Okay, so not not supplementation, but instead. You shuffle things around, but you've still got a full increase from the S I A. Okay, interesting. All right, thank you.
Well, thanks again.
Thank you so much. That overview. Moving on. Um, and I can follow down. Cash, Alan, the H S student trip to Italy.
Yes. Um, first, I'd like to thank Cory Dallinger for introducing me to this and encouraging me and supporting me and attempting to bring this idea for you guys. Um, and mostly I think I'll just start by giving you a little of my history. When I was in high school, I was born and raised Jewish students. And it was by far one of the most impactful and like whole Korean experiences I had and I have always wanted to. Pass that on in a way that I can. So when the subject said that I maybe take tours in the opposite years that she does and maybe to some of the non Spanish speaking countries. I don't know if you knew I was gonna dive right into something, but I was in. So um, uh, initially I wanted to maybe attempt a German trip because we have German. Uh, penthouse that we've started a program having the students write letters back and forth. And I thought, well, the freshman last year started this. They'll be seniors when is kind of fun time for them to travel, but after discussing and kind of polling the sophomore class. They were much more into Italy and they're the ones that I need to want to go. So we just, you know, we adjusted the. And so I don't know if you all have any questions about this. This is a company that Cory has knew several times and. So I feel like it's a pretty familiar, you know. Okay, to use, but.
If you have any that really wanted it already, but you know.
Um, I have been dropping little hints here and there. I haven't wanted to speak about it too much. I will say. Uh, they recommend eighteen months before the date and by the time I have this meeting, you know, possibly have an approval and it's to start campaigning. It will be at the seventeen month mark to have a parent meeting, so I kind of want to, you know, be able to dive in. And um so I've sort of tried to like. And I and I had to poll some of the history classes. I asked the world history classes, you know, if you had these four places to choose from. You know, if we were going to do such a thing, what would you like? And they were overwhelmingly, you know, towards Italy. It's gonna be hot.
I went to Italy this summer. The Mediterranean. They will be experiencing hot culture. Um, so any kid in the school can choose to participate in this as long as they'll still be a student, right?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. And it just all funded through fundraising or?
We can do fundraising. Uh, most of it will have to be parent funding, I believe, and due to the timing, because I I didn't want to skip an opportunity and wait to twenty twenty seven, so I thought. Attempt to make this work. And so, yeah, it will have to be personal funding. I'm happy to fundraise and help fundraise. Um, when I went as a child, I had to do a hundred percent fundraising, so um it was a great way for me. To understand my personal community of support, my community more widely across the city and, you know, find ways to make it happen for myself, so.
Is it comparable to how much? Where is programs?
It is, yeah. Yeah, there is um. Uh, just slightly more because it's further away, the travel is a little bit more complicated, but um I kept it within one country. When you go to Europe, if you start hopping other countries, it became exceedingly more, so I didn't, I wanted to keep it as low as I possibly could, but also offer a European. Sort of destination or something a little bit further away.
I also did it when I was that age.
It really is changing your perspective on a global way in the physical realm is. It's really like altering, so I think good for our kids.
Just a comment, I know Ms. Hager is gonna start doing interview coaching for kids. This could be a really good opportunity for our kids to enter a workforce and get a job.
Yeah.
For their weight.
I will be encouraging that, I will, yeah. I will be encouraging that. I feel like there's a definite sense of, you know. Being self responsibility for that type of thing and. And giving away the support.
The big part of it. Thank you, Cash.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. Thanks for stepping in. For the space and wanting to be interested in the comments.
Oh, yeah. And we, if we approve it, you have to do one of the presentations Cory always does.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Thank you.
If you, if you're here and you were done with your presentation and you wanted to scoot out, you are free to do that. You don't have the same for the entire meeting. You know, great to listen to whenever you want to leave. Feel free. We are not a. All right. We are.
Okay, I provided with uh some updates and uh this is my activities. Uh, for the month of uh October or November. Uh, some of the highlights that I had were, well. I I highlight uh were uh the Kinder Fest feast at Thanksgiving. And watching those little. Eat their soup and wear their headbands and all that stuff. They were so excited. The artists is still to eat that soup, but it was, it was. It was awesome. Every classroom. Uh, they were totally, totally engaged there. And then the uh the Kinder Balloon March through the halls here, another one, uh, just followed that one a couple of weeks later. Lot of fun. Uh, the OSBA convention. Was really good. Um, I had a good time there. I know we talked a lot about the presentations and the education that they provided there as a group. We talked about the the our experience. And um I highlighted later on in the agenda, and I'll come on and talk about what we did experience a little bit. And then uh as far as bond projects go, uh, the renovated classroom at the high school or at the middle school is done and it's in operation. So they are using it currently. Uh, after the winter, uh, we'll take everything out of there. They have the winter storage stuff in there for the Santa Village thing giveaway. Uh, once that's over, then we'll go in and finish it up with the floors, but it's occupied. And then the uh, it's a power has. Been working on the uh installation of the electric tunnel out there. So that'll be up and going and then we'll trench it and uh hook them up and let it fill my house. Their metal school as well. And that's what I have for for my highlights. Any questions on any of the activities?
I can't believe you got so much done at the elementary school.
At the elementary school?
Yeah.
All the updates here.
The lighting, like that really did get done in the summer, so that's impressive.
Yeah.
I just expected it to go over. Having a little wash.
Yeah, all the electrical, well, this room isn't done, but then the office classrooms were first. So all the elec, the electrical. Raises and and all of the uh fixtures has completed this week. Now they're working on the offices and then they'll come back and finish up this room. And they'll be all done right with this building. And um. Yeah, and and painting is. Being finished this week as well on the exterior in the back of the inside. It's going good. Moving right along.
Thinking of moving it on, I want to. I'm like, comments. Um, I do, thank you. Thank you. And one person registered this evening. I have. A thing to read. Doug, if you want to, you can, if you want to. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but Oregon law prohibits the board from hearing complaints concerning district personnel. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We will give you a signal when three minutes is up, so you may finish your thought. When I call your name, please state your name, the community of residence, and share your comments. Please direct your comments to the board. Do not address questions to the board. The board's goal for the public comment hearing is to listen to concerned comments and opinions. The board will not respond to your questions. So, yeah.
Hi, I'm Doug Allison and I am one of the coaches at the middle school football team. We have seven community members that currently coach the uh the middle school team. Uh, three of them are dads, uh, but they've all agreed to stay on next year, even though only one of them will have a a child there. Um. So we, we are excited to have community involvement at the middle school level in in athletics. We also had one high school student that uh was an assistant coach for us all year this year, and I'm trying to hold him in his chair right now. Uh. It's a thrill. But one day we got out on the field and as we had been instructed by Randy Wittenborn with the the high school boys uh soccer team. We lied up and began going around the field. Both at the perimeter of the athletic field and then on the track and then outside the track. Um, two of our students discovered a scorched area of the athletic field and began just screaming it at the rest of us. Look, somebody burned our field. On that day as well as others, we find uh. A bucket full of. Of candy wrappers, of cigarette butts. We find an occasional needle and an occasional condom. Um. Don't want my football students, athletes to experience that. Um. We had a lot of fun out there. What we cannot afford to do is offer facilities for our players that also due to our neglect can cause injuries. Um, and cause things to happen to them. So in in spite of the fact that it really goes against everything in me. To uh do something that could potentially prohibit someone from being out on those fields whenever they they would like to be. Um, I really recommend that we um go ahead as a school district and build these fences. I think it will protect our kids. As much as I want access to those fields whenever I want there. Um, I know that's not the mandate of the school district. It's to is to teach kids from kindergarten through twelfth grade. Um, and I I believe that that that's what you should do. As I conclude. Uh, so that you know where I stand. Um. In football, we have offense and defense. That we work on hard. I believe you need to beef up defense. Did you get it?
Yeah. Thank you.
This joke is dying. This joke is dying. Beef up the defense.
I need the explanation. Thank you. All right. Which brings us into our unfinished thing of the evening. So our first item is a motion and then to approve school safety and security. Wait, we have any question? Do you have any updates that they were missing?
So, CSD priority. That the Creteau School District, our number one priority is the safety and security of our students. Since two thousand and eight, we have been actively adding to the levels of safety and security at Creteau School District. With a multi-tiered approach that includes a two thousand and eighteen assessment of our schools from the Land County Sheriff's Department, which is tied to national guidance from Homeland Security. We are making proactive strides further enhance the safety of our students. School safety and security. In two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty, the Land County Sheriff's Office conducted school security assessments for all three schools. The security assessments were aligned to the federal K twelve school security guide developed by the Federal Security Agency, which includes the Department of Homeland Security. The assessment focuses on four layers of security for school safety. The grounds property, perimeter layer, which outlines the outer boundary of the school campuses. The school ground campus layer, which encompasses the athletic fields, parking lot and other outdoor spaces, playgrounds and other outdoor space that is part of the school's campus. The building perimeter layer, four walls that enclose the building and the building interior layer, which comprises of all spaces inside school buildings such as administrative offices, hallways, cafeterias, classrooms, gymnasiums, et cetera, all areas within the wall. The assessments um, by the Land County Sheriff's Office determined that our schools and facilities had excessive vulnerability due to threats to students, uh, vulnerability to threaten the student and staff safety and criminal activity. That was the outcome of their study. Uh, the Land County Sheriff's Office made several recommendations to build increased security and true safety of our schools, staff, and crime prevention. Among them, reduce the active points to the property and continue the six-foot cycle fencing along the east and west property line. Add fencing around the school buildings and sports fields. So the outer perimeter and then the school grounds. Sure. From a legal perspective, our legal counsel provided an opinion. So long as the district is building the fence on its property and is relying upon recent survey lines to guarantee that's the case and there are no evens for any of the property owners on district property, there should be no issue with building the fence. There is no right to access district property, even if they have done so for years as neighbors to the district. Everyone can appreciate that school safety is a legitimate reason to build fences despite the community inconvenience. The district's second counsel had an opinion. Potentially, the, yes, the absence of a fence could support a complaint by, a complaint or a claim by someone that the district was negligent and that the district's negligence resulted in them being injured. This would depend on particular facts. For example, if a third party were to enter the property without permission and injure a student or a staff person, the injured party might argue that the district partially, was partially responsible for their injury because there wasn't a fence. The fact that there was a recommendation by the Land County Sheriff's Department in two thousand and eighteen is something that the injured party could learn through discovery. This fact could potentially bolster the injured party's argument that the district was negligent. Community expectation, as a result of the two thousand nineteen twenty and two thousand twenty-two twenty increased strategic planning processes to improve Creteau School, the community prioritized school safety and security as the top priority. In a recent bond survey, the Creteau community also prioritized school safety and security as the number one top priority. The bond passed with seventy percent approval rating. In a recent survey regarding increasing security for safer schools, the parents supported perimeter fifth fencing by seventy-five percent, staff by seventy-five percent, and community members, non-parent and non-staff, by fifty-five percent. The same survey regarding increasing security for safer schools, the parents supported interior fencing for the school campuses, fields, and such by seventy-two percent, staff by seventy-eight percent, and community members, non-parents and non-staff, by fifty-five percent. Community themes. Um, when we cluster them up in the comment uh, were three, increase security for our school event facility. Uh, provide access to the public and protect the trees and weather. Consideration. The district's priority is student safety. The district is responsible to secure and preserve CSD facilities for school and extracurricular activities. The federal school safety plan includes school grounds, campus, and school grounds perimeter fencing for proactive safety barriers and crime prevention. Legal counselors recommend that the district follows the guidance of the Land County Sheriff's Office assessment and the federal school security guide. The community surveys support increasing security for safer schools. The bond oversight committee reached one hundred percent consensus that security fencing with appropriate use of bond funds. Some community members would like to continue with some to full access of the district's property and schools. Those are things to consider in my decision making. My recommendation. After considering the information presented to the board above, right? I am recommending that we move forward with the school grounds campus and school grounds perimeter fencing to develop two additional layers of security to make our school safer for students and staff. As such, I would initiate action to do the following. Develop a plan for a school ground fencing around all three campuses and their facilities to include fields, playgrounds, et cetera. And that the community have measured access to the field via facilities usage process, which is the same procedure that we provide for facilities use inside of our school buildings. Two, develop a plan for perimeter fencing to decrease perimeter entry points to four, which would include the north, west, east, and south entry gates. The public would have access to the grounds after school hours until the evening and on weekends until the evening as well. However, the district would fully secure the property at all hours if additional security and criminal activity warranted. In developing these plans, the district will protect the wetlands and the trees on our school grounds and perimeter fence line. And four, the district will complete the survey of the property lines and communicate the property survey logs to the east and west property line neighbors. As safety and security is our number one priority, and the Federal Security Agency guidelines for schools identify campus grounds and perimeter ground fencing for security barriers to proactively increase safety. And the Land County Sheriff's Office recommends both layers of fencing for security and school safety. And our staff and parents overwhelmingly support these safety measures. Installing the fencing on both layers is the right thing to do and it's what is best for the safety of our students. That's our, that's my recommendation.
I'll try to share some comments and some summaries with different conversations that I've had over the past month about that. Um, I had several folks mention, you know, they pay property taxes, they want access to the property. And right or wrong, my view, what I've provided back to try to have a deeper conversation with them about the problem has been um, the core mission of the school district is to educate kids K twelve. While we would love to be able to provide facilities to the general community, providing land access and, you know, track and field, because they, they've primarily been runners who enjoy running on the track. And I hate taking away access for that, but they're not in K twelve, they're not our target audience. And when we have scarce funds, like having to constantly upkeep the track and the field for the students, it's hard to prioritize that. Um, this district has had, we look longer term, we've struggled with being able to provide sports and education. And when we came down to it, we had to cut sports for a period of time in order to fund education. And so I don't want additional funds funneled off in order to keep facilities updated and keep them safe just so that we can continue the sports and the education when a lot of this is happening after school hours. So I, that's been what I've shared, just so that you guys are hearing my message when I have conversations. Um, I am, I appreciate Mike's proposal in developing plans to further secure it. I, I don't think we have a new choice but to do so, otherwise we're going to continue to have the increased cost in fixing the facilities. Um, I hate closing things off because I like to use some of those facilities on the weekend as well. Um, the other thing I will let you guys know is I've been doing some research into what other districts do in situations like this uh, where they're having an asset that the community deals with. Um, so I'm still having conversations with some of those districts to learn. And so I've, uh, I told Mike, like, this is a great plan and everything they're doing still includes, that's my name. Um, still includes access to a secured site. Um, so o- over time, if I come across any program that looks likely maybe going to take an opportunity, I, I told Mike, like, I think we're coming back with more opportunities just to see if we can figure out a way to allow students to have access to it. But again, all of those programs that I'm seeing, like in the state of Washington, what they're doing, they're already secured, right? So it's limited access. So this plan is, um, yeah, I, I think it's a good point to move forward with. So those are my thoughts and my conversations that I've had over the last month or so.
I would agree with you about like, when, when I've reached out to and talked to people outside of our community in different communities, they have, they have like voices, they're surprised that we haven't already had our campus closed. And that's just, like, some of our neighboring schools that I have friends that have kids in, you know, or, or they work there and they express that we're not the same as they are and we're one of the last ones in my county, I think that that happens. That will better neighbors too. All right, we will move further.
I was gonna say, I, I fully appreciate that it's not closed off all the time, that there will be community access, um, you know, in the evenings and that, that, that piece is added. Um, because I think a big piece of the conversation is that this is one of the few spaces that people have, even though it may not be our responsibility, that is, you know, something that people bring up is like this, because I have to go walk or uh, potentially run. And I, but my stance on this in my conversations is I do think during school hours, like, I really strongly stand behind the fact that community members should probably not walk in their or, um, using the campus while our students are in class. That is just a huge safety concern to me. Um, but I appreciate that there's, there is thoughtfulness and mindfulness around the community in this, Mike, that you were saying, like, look, we'll keep it open, um, for certain sections of time. It may be limited, but our students come first. So I do appreciate that. Um, because I think right now it's just so open. And it definitely, let's say, having a student with a tennis class.
Yeah, I feel the same. It's, it's hard to know, like, you know, if there is an assessment and said we should do it, it's hard to say that we shouldn't, especially if someone gets hurt or having been, I heard recently, a dog on campus and their kid running with the dog that is on a leash, knowing that they got trapped, they hurt. And that would be horrible.
It's tough. I'm with you. I come out here all the time and we practice, we do all kinds of stuff and that's tough. But at the same time, I have the same experience, Doug, that I'm picking up things off our heels before we practice that I hope our kids don't see. And that makes me sad for our kids too. So it's a double edged sword and I think the reality is we have an obligation to protect our kids first and foremost. Um, we also have an obligation to protect the money we just spent, the community's money we just spent, also in a lot of ways. I don't want to cut off access to everyone and I, we can't make anything happen if we don't create some fencing and security. At least that gives us options for when we want to open and close. Right now we have no option. We, it's just over. So I think there's leave room for a middle ground um, to say, are there opportunities to have more access, to have less access? We can find the right, the right thing to do, but right now we can't even. It's just open.
I agree with that. And I, I also think like, some of the questions I have in this is like, you know, summertime, maybe is there a possibility that we could have some extended access, maybe we have a set time to open book buildings, like an open build time where kids want to come if there is like some adult supervision or something, you know? I mean, I think that the, the point in the facility use request is accountability, right? So who's going to be accountable for whatever's taking place in that time? Um, but I do think, you know, maybe looking at having some facilitated time that kids could come through of the wall, uh, made during the summertime, so it's not, when it's not used by the sports teams, right, for example? Um, but looking at that process and what that looks like, um, to support the students in those off times. I mean, I don't know, I know Joel, there's a forum, right? I mean, like, right now, he's just like a corner.
Right.
Okay. So, I mean, that seems like a pretty simple thing to do.
It's a fairly easy process. I just went through the process. It's very easy to find. He helped me. So I think that, you know, we need members here.
So it's not a big ask from the community if they didn't lose the spaces. It's, it's simply, you know, having a record submitted that is probably an adult saying, I will ensure that the space is clear for and closed. We'll leave.
I move to approve the security and fencing proposal as presented.
That's okay. All in favor? I think you really presented that, is what I have. All right, our next item on the agenda. Um, would be the, with the board's anything, um, within them. Did you guys all read my email that he sent with those dates on it? Um, that for availability for our board name.
So he, uh, he gave us one Thursday, I told him we were looking for the next days after the first few years. And he did, he threw out one Thursday, which is the fourth of January, the first day, he's a little active break. And, uh, now that's, that's a tough one for us to pull up and get into, but anyway, uh, from then on, all the rest of the dates are all Wednesday.
I can just, I'm not available until March, but.
I'm not, okay, well, in January, first February.
Oh, it's more important for you and I could probably zoom in, right? Like, I don't see why not. I'm just gonna be in Arizona. It was so rough. Yeah, so I think that you guys pick whatever and I can zoom in because I've done it before and I think it's far more important and probably for, um, for me.
If there are a date and time that works and it's in the evening, I could probably zoom.
In the evening, I could probably zoom in, but I've been traveling Wednesday through Friday every week for eight weeks.
For January and February, so let's just maybe push out to March and see if there's a date that works, because I can totally. I'm not gonna be. Just must bring her, you know, let's not do spring break. I did look at the March date that they offered because I was like. Um, my guess is the sixth, thirteen, which one? Which one, does any of those look good for anybody else?
I can do the first two.
Set it for the sixth, is that what, what's it, what for you, Tim? And Sarah got to go on vacation, so she's.
No more vacation.
It's a, it's like a.
Whatever we decide. I can handle those evenings most much.
Okay, so let's just plan on the sixth, if everybody, if that's something.
Uh, which month?
The, uh, March.
Um, I, I'm flexible, but at the latest in the evening, we can push it better, because that'll be.
Alright, we'll start, so let's just plan on the dates, the time when we.
What the period is, do you guys want to go?
Well, I think probably. I don't know, ten.
Five thirty would probably be. Well, you know, on second thought, if we do need to go earlier. Uh, I could probably swing four thirty to five, I do want to, it gotta work early that day for that. So, why can't it come?
I love earlier, but I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know when the tariff schedule is either.
I don't, I, I will make it when I make, I'm, I'll try to leave Paris, if it works for a moment.
We'll, we'll look around five, five thirty.
He's got to travel.
He's got to drive, so. We'll see what.
We have a couple more.
On the six.
On the six.
That's progress.
That is progress.
Thank you for giving.
Yeah, thank you. Right, next item is, uh, information from Mike.
The bargaining update, yeah, so. Uh, just wanted to bring it all up to speed and I'll do these on a monthly basis and a board meeting so that we're all on the same page. Uh, so I, uh. Have, have agreed to two dates in February for bargaining. And my opinion. That's. We can do this by spring break. And the CEA. Responded and proposed ten bargaining dates and informed me that they would like to have an agreement by June. So. I think they got a lot to talk about if they want ten. Um, we'll see how that goes, if that, this is my first. My first update, along with that. Knowing what's out there, you know, on the horizon and what's behind us. On the trail that's come through in, in this year's bargaining. I'd like to schedule an executive session meeting to discuss labor relations with our legal counsel, Rebecca Jacobs. And she's available on January tenth from six to six thirty, that's our board meeting, our next board meeting. If that would be alright with all of you. Benefit from having. They, the meeting would start at six and we adjourned to executive session, and the meeting would reopen. In, in public, session at six thirty. That good?
This is a bit of a tangent, but I was gonna ask, so that January board meeting, um, is at the same time that high schools having their curriculum night. So, as a parent, I'd love to go to the curriculum night, but then we have, so I don't know if there's an opportunity to move to the board meeting.
I won't be here if it's on the. And, like, I'm just throwing more logistics in.
I, me too.
Yeah, I'm saying, if you moved it, I could. And I'll make a choice if it stays, I just wanted to point out that.
We changed the day of our meeting.
Why are we posted, right? But, yeah, we changed the dates when it interferes. It depends on the center.
Um, the night. Okay, I'll check.
Yeah, because then Mary would be in town. And then.
So that. So you're not available on the eleventh, then? So what about the eighth or ninth?
Yeah, eighth or ninth.
Give her an option.
To the Monday or Tuesday.
And if not, then you'll have to look at the next week.
Thank you, thank you for considering that.
Which on the next week, is it very available the next week, Wednesday?
Not Wednesday through Friday. I feel like we're really like, we shoot on, like, on a giant Google calendar. Like, be moving everybody's schedules around, but.
Okay, then, uh, that gives them four dates, we'll be up.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Probably not January fifteenth. You should be all of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sure.
Alright, third day. Did you have any more?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's not gonna propose any.
No, he's like, no more calendar items for these people tonight, so we're done. Um, and then, then, and just discussion of the OSBA convention that we have a number of them in. And, uh, for. There I gotta go, and Sarah, and Lacy, and I, and Mike, I thought it was good. I enjoyed a number of the things that I attended.
I did too, I'm trying to remember what we attended, I did number one.
I didn't wish that, I wish I had my notebook of the. I did actually enjoy what we were with the other, um. Districts, the other districts, the roundtable, that was, I thought that was really good and it was. Nice to see other people, um, where they are and where we are.
The. That, that session was a, a real eye opener.
Yeah.
The regional one, with all of the districts. And that really, uh. I mean, you know, they talked about some of the, the highlights of their districts and also some of the challenges that they're having. And the challenges quite far outweigh the highlights that came forward. And, I mean, I was just kind of. Listening and thinking, oh my gosh, you know, how, how you, how can, how can I, how can anybody help her, you know? With those challenges, they have to work through them and, uh. Up there in some places. I'm really feel fortunate, um, um. How cohesive we are.
That's what I brought away from it.
And the keynote speakers and their messages were off the charts. I mean, they just have really good ones and we, uh, we were fortunate to. Hear Sarita talk, she was a keynote speaker and, and she's an author. Uh, and Debbie and I were like, oh my God, we were sitting next to her, like, oh my gosh, I mean.
Yeah.
Those are good, I mean, that's good stuff, so, uh, we agreed that, that the book will be good for us as a board to have. And, um.
Are we gonna read it together?
Are we really?
We should.
You can't say something nice.
Okay.
So, but we'll have some good.
Yeah. Thanks, you guys. No, she was really, really fun to watch and I know, I know that Mike, I think that's a taken off of the.
We couldn't make, we stayed with your stuff.
And the, the gentleman the day before, which, I, we all got.
He was so.
Oh my, and so energetic, I just want a little bit of that energy.
Let's just be partly comedic, like, like he's comedic.
Yeah, yeah.
Off the cuff, improv comedy at the same time, but it was really a message, it was very engaging.
Overall, I think it was a great conference, there were a few, uh, logistical things I think were a little bit off, but that is more of a. Figuring it out thing, but at first.
So, I do think, like, every one of our principals that holds assemblies needs to use the comedy and how he addressed it. And people walked out. So, because, because Jenny's here, I just gotta tell you, I, I literally think about this. When our city manager holds meetings, I was thinking, like, why you could tell her this? But he, you know, he opened keynote and then somebody, of course, in the middle, right, you get out, you go to the bathroom, so somebody's walking through. He has somebody cue the song, the song, baby come back, and he literally stops the whole thing. And it makes it all about the person that's walking out and she's turning red. And then he has a song queued for when she comes back, I can't remember what that was, but. It was like, it was hilarious, nobody got up to be. Anyway, just hilarious, he has some pretty, pretty good stay in your seat moments.
Yeah. We weren't moving.
He nailed them if they were texting on their phone. Whatever, he, he got, just got one in on it, not proper to say, but he really.
Yeah. It was good.
So, yeah, it was good, it was nice to be back. Alright. Moving on to our new business. We have. A full thing here. Um. We have to, we have a. Have a motion to approve the. Land E S D, and move into through the land E S D, the local plan is like twenty three to twenty seven. Alright, so, um. Oh, oh, any discussion, sorry. About that, if, or about that, you didn't be fine, eight twenty one over tonight, and you want opportunities to Dr. Bro? Alright, so any discussion regarding that, none, okay? All in favor? Alright. All on the votes? Okay. Alright. And when you get all that? Alright, the next item is the, it's from Joel. The action to through the, the motion to.
I move to approve the contractors, including the commercial contractors for the Crystal High School gym.
Then do we have?
Sorry, I, I. I thought you were done.
Okay, and then, uh, any discussion on that, do you have any questions for anybody or Joel, do you have anything that you want to share?
This is just, that, this is the national occurrence, last month, your first presentation, this is the contract, and this was reviewed. By legal counsel and we're ready to move on.
Okay, okay, all in favor? There you go. I'm crushing that. Okay, next item. Now prove the F I A training. And move to approve the F I A grant agreement for twenty three to twenty four. Any discussion regarding information on that item? It's noted on the website. I did that, um.
You're welcome.
Alright, okay, so all in favor? Okay, motion passes. Okay. So many today, we're like, this is gonna be a fact. Okay, so, uh, I move to approve the Crystal High School travel request. Second, okay? Any discussion, nothing, okay, perfect, alright, all in favor? Great.
The discussion, this is a wonderful idea. If I don't say it, and it's a discussion, and then I go, okay.
Right, next item.
I move to approve this one, can we change twenty nine to more budget calendar?
Six seconds.
Okay, any discussion regarding that? Alright, I think the only thing I wanted to bring up was. Hosting budget positions, should we discuss that after, or should we? We need, we need to have how many open, we'll have five, five open positions. So, um. No. So we need to probably get that posted on the website, I don't know who does that, but. Do we need to approve it first, or do we have to?
No, you can just discuss it. Do you want me to post it?
I think that we should post it and then we have a few that we're gonna reach out to, right?
Yes, we have free.
And, and you have to, you have to beg other people, so we'll be putting on your meeting caps to figure out. Who would want to be on the budget committee? So, I think that would be the one thing, posting that. Alright, all in favor? The budget calendar? Okay, motion passes. Well, this is the big one. Hey, this is the OSBA election vote, okay, so we have a number of them to go through. Um, the first one is the twenty twenty three election, the board division six, Linda Hamilton. Um, any on this, we're just gonna all vote, whether she's not, she doesn't have it upon her, we'll vote in favor or against. And then we'll move through all of them. So, uh, the first one is for Linda Hamilton, um. Election of the high country, position six, um, all in favor? Right? We have that four, all opposed? Alright. The first one. Uh, the second is the election of the, of Judy Newman to position six for the legal policy committee. Um. All in favor? Alright. The next one is the twenty twenty three resolution of the rural pocket voting status for OSBA board. These are just resolutions and we're gonna adopt them, so it's, um. All in favor of adopting resolution number one? Okay? All in favor? Uh, all in favor of adopting resolution number two? Okay? You're good, okay, and then. That is, that is all for all of that.
Marilyn, did you get all those?
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you. Uh, moving along, I think we have a budget update. Parker?
Yeah.
So, did you get to review the, uh, financials that I sent to this month? Any questions concerning those, for those funds? Um, the one thing I wanted to bring to your attention was, so, Esther, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
If in the.
If your regular report that you produce, you got what you're referring to, under the extras.
Like, if the regular business manager report under extras, it won't be under the quick view.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah.
No, no, okay, um, all I wanted to talk, because I don't have still mic thunder, you know, for your presentation of rap. But, um, you guys have been carrying private, that's our fund, we're aspiring this year, so twenty twenty four, or, um, S two three is ending. And there's no, um, new budget relief funding coming in, but currently this twenty twenty four budget year, we have one point six million dollars in our budget. That's being covered by those. With one point four, that means staffing, the other couple hundred thousand being operational items that will be needed next year through four to five. So we have a one point six million dollar gap, um, that we are going to need to reconcile. And it's worked in our general fund or some of the brand that we don't know about yet. I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Good highlight, thank you.
Kitchen holiday spirit. And, uh, I, what you're receiving now, and this is a new news, this is, this was, uh. But this has been presented to you in previous years, the previous two years, while we were forecasting our budget and, and. But this has been presented to you in previous years, the previous two years, while we were forecasting our budget and, and. Along with our budget plan, and how we were filling that gap between our staffing and our declining student enrollment. And you can see that uh, from two thousand nineteen twenty, at thirteen hundred and eighteen kids, down to eleven, twelve. One hundred and twelve kids, uh, we've taken quite a hit in reductions in uh. State school funding, for student funding. Uh. Simultaneously, we've increased staffing since two thousand nineteen twenty. From a hundred and forty eight staff to a hundred and sixty seven S P. And a lot of that came in with the SIA grants and the refunding. You know, we had three Escher grants. The first two, we were able to bring in, and the first one supported us with going to distance learning. Mobilizing the entire student body and staff on, on distance learning. And then the second one came in, and that was to provide support for students who came off of distance learning. Um, and a lot of S E L, social emotional learning, and then also. Uh, academic support, I mean, we've really brought in a lot of adults, so that we could, you know, break the ratio down. And have uh, fewer students per adult in the building, and we've been maintaining that with Escher three. So while the student enrollment has been going down, and we're looking at a million dollar deficit there, and we're looking at thirteen hundred to eleven hundred. Million plus, that's a deep, that's a decrease, million plus over five years. And increase in staffing cost. Um, you can see in the graph below it, um, where we're at. I mean, they've pretty much, the state has held us. Uh. Without much of an increase in cost of living across the board. In fact, this next year, we get a two percent increase. A two percent increase on our roll forward budget. That doesn't really help us cover that gap. It doesn't, I mean, with our current responsibilities of staffing, two percent isn't gonna cover, that's, that's a, a step increase. That's what a step increase costs us, two percent. That's not a cold one, doesn't cover a cold one. So, um, we were prepared, we've been talking about the, the twenty four, twenty five cliff coming. And how we were pushing our budget and using those Escher funds to get us through twenty four, twenty five. And um, we've done the best that we can to maintain our, our staffing, to support our kids. And uh, and still be responsible with our, our budget by law. Our budget has to be. So, anyway. Um. Lot of stuff out there, or, or this, this cliff in twenty four, twenty five is, is really wreaking havoc right now. In districts across the state. We work hard to, to manage our funds to stay, to, to be able to get through this year, by making those, making those, those. Traffic meter happen. But now we're looking out into the next year and following year. And um, you know, we've taken some reduction in staffing through attrition. But uh, by not filling um, positions that they've become vacant in certain grade levels or schools. But hard to do at the secondary level. Because you, they're all specialized. Perfect period, so. Anyway, uh, we'll keep working at it on our end. And, and, and adjusting to the student enrollment by grade level. But, uh. Really need to take a step up and do something. So we can provide the quality education that our kids deserve.
Great. Item is the information for the standard board and grant, do you have the information on that, or was that just something on that?
That was just in your reporting information.
Alright. Next item, cut to your report.
Hey, um, woo, I went to a conference, and I heard a lot, it was really good. And I got to know you guys a little bit better, it was fun, the, the youth that were there, um, but my main takeaway from it. Was a session that I went to on the role of the superintendent in the board, and like, how to have like, positive uh. Communication and relationship, and so it really talked about like, each, like, our role versus next role. And like, what we can talk about, we cannot talk about, and what is our, where we should, you know, be putting our efforts, which was really good for me. I think I've been a new board member, it was really helpful. Um, I learned a lot about the future of our um. The state of affairs that are gonna happen for the state as far as funding, and so um, in our regional, um. Session, I guess you could call it, uh, I was there with somebody who, in my part, who was from a larger district, and talking about the impact of like. How funding potentially would happen, so it was just like, looking to the future and how changes might happen. Uh, but I was completely not aware of, so it was like a day learning, I was like, wait, I have a million questions, um, but no, it was really good. And I made it for half of a boys' basketball league.
I tried to shut it off. Sorry, sorry, somebody calling my office.
One, I also attended the conference, and it was fantastic, in an effort so that we can all try to get to the winter con- uh. Choir concert at the high school. I made it to the middle school one last night, and Mr. Telfer, as always, does a great job. Start on time, end on time, great songs, keeps it going, the kids were excited. There was a lot in the front row, like, he put all the ones that like to just dance and have feel the music.
I know, there's spoilers, but.
It is very fun. I had a great time last night, good, yeah.
Sue, you have anything?
Uh, I attended the diversity program at Work Life School, and that. Leads to this to some extent, and that's about it.
Great, I also uh, attended and did the bias training at Work Life School, but with, with Dr. Marks, we did it there, O S B U. Um, I had our leadership meeting, and I watched a, a handful of basketball games online, cause I couldn't make it, but it is nice to be watching online. But we can't get.
Kind of that month, right, like, we had a lot of, kind of, transitioning in winter and things like that. I went to OSBA training and leadership. And I finished my vector training, so I can stop getting those emails. I've done it for like, a couple districts, I'm pretty sure I did it for the, the different districts this year, so I, I'm very, very trained on all of the things. But, I think that's it, um, did we want to try to read a chapter of the book, read chapter one? So, no, like, the next item was work goals, so I think that would be kind of fun. It's not a super long chapter, so I think that we can do it, even if you have to do it in the parking lot before you walk in, and you can do that chapter. It's four pages, it's a short study level, okay.
Am I also required to read chapters?
Alright, and that is everything, there's another order.